Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Before, before. Good for the track team.
Good.
I haven't checked in, but I would be looking for that number. I was just hoping that was a good day. Well, you should know this. I wasn't able to sit down with our treasurer as they have her and get out. Yeah, figure out how much cost and other stuff. Yeah. But I would think, I would think.
We are recorded now. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled city council meeting for October 7th. If you could all stand and join us in the pleasure of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. If we can get a roll call, please.
Guess that's me.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagan.
Here.
Mayor Bellinger.
Here.
First up tonight, we have a couple of presentations. Up first, we have the sergeant badge pinning ceremony for Sergeant, soon to be Vieira. It's up to you, Chief. For is yours.
So this is Nathan Vieira. He started with the Escalon Police Department as a reserve on September 17th of 2018. Put in his time, dedication. He got assigned to a full-time officer in July 15th of 2019. Over the past several years, he's really grown and matured as an officer and gained a lot of knowledge. And in May of 14th, May 14th of 2024, he was promoted to sergeant. And he's going to be having his badge pinned on him by his nephew Austin.
Just want to say thank you, Chief, for believing in me and your vote of confidence to lead. Counsel, thank you for the opportunity. As always, it's a pleasure and an honor to serve this community. So, thank you, and I look forward to continuing to serve the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next up, we have a certificate of recognition for Steve Santos. If you could meet me up at the podium, please.
So on October 16th of 2022, while at the Valley Inn, you attempted to de-escalate a volatile situation involving two BAR patrons. After a verbal altercation escalated to one subject pushing the other, you immediately intervened to separate the two parties. Then, as one subject went to his vehicle and armed himself with a handgun, you remained calm and attempted to reason with him. When the armed suspect threatened to shoot the unarmed suspect, or unarmed subject, and another physical altercation ensued, you stepped in and took the subject's firearm as he was reaching for it. You remained calm and acted courageously in the face of danger. You risked harm to yourself in order to protect others. The Escalon Police Department, on behalf of the City of Escalon, would like to thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
You'd like to say something? The floor is yours if you would like. Next up on presentations, we've got the proclamation for breast cancer awareness. I'm going to read the proclamation if you can bear with me here. Proclamation of this Escalon City Council recognizing the month of October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month, held in October every year, aims to promote screening and prevention of the disease, which affects 1 in 8 women in the United States every year and 2.3 million women worldwide. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month features a number of campaigns and programs conducted by groups ranging from breast cancer advocacy organizations to local community organizations, to major retailers and professional sports leagues, and whereas thanks to early detection and better treatments, mortality rates for breast cancer have steadily decreased over the last decade. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our grandmothers, mothers, daughters, sisters, and friends, as we recognize all who have joined their loved ones in the fight, in fighting their battle, as well as advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers, whose care and hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And now therefore, I, David Bellinger, Mayor of the City of Escalon, on behalf of the Escalon City Council, do recognize the month of October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and urge our fellow citizens to become aware of the impacts that breast cancer has on our community, and take action to help diagnose early or seek prevention care for breast cancer, and to pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease. Due to this, October 7th of 2024. Thank you, everybody, for your attention and patience with that. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Is there anything at the dice where we'd like to pull? Yep, let's take a quick moment here as we clear the room.
Yep, our screens are down there, Jill.
What's that?
Our screens are down.
Yeah. Trying to fix the go-to. If we could just take a minute to fix the go-to. Says it's connecting to audio, but not connected.
There's remaining. Bear with us for just a moment. We're working on a little technical difficulty. We'll get you back here in just a second.
Warm in here?
Yes.
Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Back up and running. All right. Thank you for your patience, everybody. We're back to that consent calendar item. If there's anything here at the dice we'd like to pull from the consent calendar, if not, I'll, or a member of the public in the room, if not, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to pull number five.
Number five, all right. Any others? If not, I'll take a motion on the balance.
All motion for the rest of the consent calendar.
A motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Back to item five of the consent calendar. Councilman Strowman.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a clarification on check number 081406, and the amount of $5,455.50 to Blackwater. What was that for? I understand that there are meetings that are going on, but I thought everything related to the sewage treatment plan is currently on hold.
Can you share what page number that is on? But while we're looking at that, it is, it is not on hold. We are developing a strategy and hopeful that we do not need to move forward with the $40 million project described previously. We have made significant inroads with state compliance. Compliance has led to permitting. So now that we are in a better footing on the permitting side, excuse me, the compliance side, the NOV and the CDO, the cease and desist order and the notice of violation, they're not over. We're still fixing the things. We need to make some infrastructure investments to firmly fix those, those issues. But we're in a better place. And so we have been coordinating with our consultant, Blackwater, on revised designs, on strategy and approach and dealing with the state. So the nominal, relatively nominal, not, you know, $5,000, but relatively nominal cost is us coordinating that effort to try to get the project cost to a number that is significantly less than 40 million.
So can I make a request of finance director? And previously, anytime an invoice were to come before council for Ardua or Blackwater related to surface water or the sewage treatment plant, we would get a chance to review those invoices ahead of time. If we could get back into that habit, that way we can avoid questions like this.
Certainly, I'll make sure that those accompany the next registered demands.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve consent item number five.
Do we have a second to that?
I'd second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next up, staff communications and updates. Item eight, fiscal year '24, '25, first quarter budget update. Do we want to do that first, or do we want to go around the room with the rest of this?
I think maybe in lieu of going around, we will start on the, the budget. I don't know if anyone has anything that they need to share outside of our, our presentations.
Okay.
So just real quick, Officer Gek has passed a one-day training course for the motorcycle, and so hopefully we'll allow him to get out and work some traffic enforcement on the residential streets here coming, coming up. So hopefully we'll be able to get some radar enforcement on the motorcycle here.
Great news. I'm glad to see that thing back on the road soon.
Me too. He's been training and working, and he went and had some instruction over the last week. Looks like he's going to be good to go for residentials.
Great news. Thank you, Chief.
The right one? No.
Almost grabbed it.
Yeah.
There you go.
There we are. Okay. Yeah, do you want to do the clicky, or do you, do you think you can just?
Just, yeah, just.
All right. I'll go like that. How's that? So for our first quarter, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present this tonight. Our first quarter, we have a summary budget update. This is going to show us a quick overview of what we have accomplished in our first quarter. If we can go on. Our actuals year-to-date, we are comparing them to quarter one of the previous year. So that way we can kind of get some idea as to how if we're high or if we are low compared to an average. And so far for the year, even though some revenue areas were lower, we had an increase of $10,000. A small amount, but significant still. In the expense area, we're down quite a bit. We have 1.4 million the first quarter of this year as opposed to 1.8 million for the first quarter of last year. So it is down, and that could be contributed to various different things. If we had a large invoice last year, perhaps for a CIP project, or if we had a vendor who was late giving us our invoices this year. So, but in overall, we're down, and that is good. General fund, we've got our quarter one, 2024, again versus our 2025 with this, this year. We can see a couple points here. Our revenues are higher, like we discussed. Our expenses are actually lower, so that's good. Our personnel costs, we have our year-to-date and our budget. We have about 64% of our budget available still. And in Q1, we had quite a bit of overtime and a few other items, so I don't expect that to follow, to trend throughout the entire year. Our services and supplies are also down. That's where we're seeing some of that cost savings. We have about 71% of that budget left. And if we looked at this straight line, we would want to see all of our incomes come in and all of our expenses come in at the same rate. And we would be at about 25% usage or actualized. Right now, because our revenues and incomes come in in different times, especially with the tax cycle, we kind of have to just say, well, we're, we're close. We're within these percentages. And we are within the percentages that we saw last year. So that's kind of what we're looking at. Where are we at? With three months' worth of data, it's a small amount of data to look at, but. So, and cost allocation is just a general function of moving costs from general fund out. So do we have any questions so far? We have down at the bottom of this slide our budget targets, and it kind of explains that 25% usage. All things being equal, everything being perfect, we would have 25% usage every quarter. That's not the way a business runs, most businesses, so we don't have that either. But our revenues down in the green box, we're at 49% of our target so far for the year. And our expenses are 108% of the target for the year, which is kind of what we see. We have a lot more invoices. They're going to come in really steady, but the revenues come in quarterly, every couple months, that type of thing. They're not going to be a real even. And then all of a sudden, we're going to get, you know, a large tax revenue collection, so it'll help cover all that. So our actuals right now for our revenues, we have that 12% of the budget being used. That's really good. Our expenses so far, we're at 27% of the budget. We know those revenues are going to come in soon. General fund, again, we have another comparison between our, this is for our revenues, between quarter one of the current year and quarter one of the previous year. The highlights are that we collected about the same amount. So because we collected about the same amount and our expenses were actually down, I'm looking at this as a positive effect. We have less expense, and this is a result of several cost-saving measures that we've taken. So hopefully that will trend throughout the year and will realize some nice savings at the end, into the year. Licenses and permits and use of money proper shows our greatest upward trend for this first quarter. And if we look at that, last year at the same time, we only had about $5,000 collected, whereas this year we have $51,000 collected. And that is mostly our interest income. So even in just a small amount of time, we've seen some really good outcomes there. And again, it gets us down to that net of $10,000, but there's a couple, couple areas that really shine through. Expenditures, we always have a lot of expenses, but quarter over quarter.
Can we go back one slide?
Sure.
Sorry about that. Thank you. The current service charges, there's a larger discrepancy there. Can you let us know what the current service charges is?
We haven't collected as much this year for everything that's in that particular bucket. And if we go to the last slide, is that going to show us?
This one, or?
That's our expenditures. I didn't put one in for the revenue portion. And I think what we're seeing is just timing. By the time we reach mid-year, we will have had a lot of those different service charges and things that were collected in the previous year. We'll see those flow through in this year, unfortunately.
What the, the service charges are?
Well, let me see.
Not each and every one, but just kind of in general?
They're going to be the charges that we collect. I think it's going to be for all of the franchise fees, the tax that's, that we collect and we remit on to the state or to the county. There's different types of funds, grant funding, that allow us to do some of these fees, too. So it's a, it's a hodgepodge of things. And last year and year before, we had some ARPA money. We had some different grants and things that have small amounts of these. So I don't know exactly what that $79,000 is comprised of, but it's going to be a mixed amount of all these different small dollars that we're able to grab off of different funding sources. So they are revenues to us, but we have to be able to tap into those grants in order to get that.
Okay. If I were to look in last year's budget and this year's proposed budget, would I be able to, to find those, or are they under like a different category? Like if I was looking year-long, would it be listed under service charges, or would it fall under a different?
That's the category that we've put it in.
Okay.
And we do have information that breaks that out. In fact, that's something that I provide every month. So in our next meeting, we'll have the monthly, and it'll, it'll break out exactly what those little pieces, parts are.
Similarly to that, Selinda, under other revenues, I think it'd be helpful for us to know what those, I mean, there's a $44,000 shortfall, but it would just be helpful if we knew, you know, what the cause of that, what the causation of that deficit is.
Yeah, I totally agree. We do have in the other revenues, last year there was some recycling money that went in there also. I think we had gotten rid of a few junk items. This year we have some recycling money also, but it's gone into a different fund, so we can account for it more accurately. It does require a little bit more reporting than the previous year. So we've moved a few things around in order to make them more effectively watched and maintained. So that could account for some of that also.
Can I request that at the next meeting, we have kind of a general, some general categories that both the currents, the current service charges and the other revenues, maybe just to brief what those are comprised of?
Yes, of course. And that'll be in our next, usually in the meeting, in the second meeting of the month, we're able to get more details. Because of the way that the timing goes, we just closed September, so we'll have all those details for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
So do we have anything else on this one? Okay. Our expenses. We have kind of an odd thing here. You can see in the green, quarter one, for the current year and quarter year for the, quarter one for the prior year. For some reason, we have yet to determine, all the expenses were not properly accounted for in the areas of insurance and the corporation yard and things. So you can see where this, this quarter, I have actually applied those to all the different areas that they're supposed to be applied to. The previous year, I believe they were waiting till either mid-year or end of year. Where applying these types of expenses every quarter gives you a much better picture of what you're actually spending. So it's my goal to get this to be done on a monthly basis. It's probably going to be 2026 before we get to, to that. But quarterly, at the very least, lets everybody know what they've spent in their respective areas, instead of waiting till the end of year and you get the surprise of all these expenses that waterfall into your fund. So we can also see that this makes a little bit heavier expenses for, say, the police department there. We can see there's $159,720 difference between the quarters from the two years, but that's only because all those expenses were not properly allocated at that quarter. So again, it's a timing issue. At mid-year, I will see a lot of these things smooth out.
When you say they were improperly recorded, can, can you elaborate?
Yeah, if we have expenses coming into the general fund, and those expenses, pieces, parts of them are supposed to go into, say, the water fund, the 600 fund, or they're supposed to go into transportation, and they're not moved, they sit there and they wait, and that's when you get this, you get dollars where you shouldn't have them. So when those are properly allocated out in a timely way, you get to see the actual expenses for those individual departments. And that's important for general fund because, as you can see with just a few of the departments, there, there's quite a difference.
So with the discrepancy of being improperly recorded, was it, was it just timing, or?
It's timing.
Okay, it wasn't that they were distributed or, or there wasn't an expenditure from the incorrect fund? It was just, it was just a matter of when, when it hit the books?
Right. So at, in quarter one of the prior year, you would have probably looked at your, at your department and said, oh, yeah, that's not that, that bad. But you didn't have the benefit of having all those expenses properly allocated into their departments at the right time. So that's something we're striving to get done on a quarterly basis so that we can see what the actual expenditures are and not have to be surprised at year-end when we have all these expenses to allocate.
It's not that we're forecasting a $409,000 deficit. It's actually reporting it into the correct category of expenditures, correct?
We're reporting it into the correct categories or the correct departments, and we've spent less. So that's kind of a good thing. I think it's, it's a multitude of, of things. We've cut costs. We're being more efficient with what we're processing as far as all the normal day-to-day activity that we have. And we're being more prudent as far as the reporting and trying to get that done on a quarterly basis, so that everybody can see what's actually going on. It helps. But overall, our, our expenses are trending downward in every section. These, of course, like just with the, with the revenues, these are summaries. So if you were to break apart this, that's where you get the, the second week report that's 75 pages long. If you break these, these divisions all apart, you can see every single item that's gone up, up or down. And we'll look at that at, at our next meeting when we have a full report. Anything else on this slide? Okay. So that is the summary. And towards the end, our very last slide, we did show some expenses in case anyone had any additional questions.
I just had, I just had one question. In general, I know you were kind of reworking the investment part of stuff. How's that, how's that coming?
It's been going well. We have about two and a half months of all that going. And for one small amount, small dollars, but they do add up after a while. Just moving around the efficiency of how we're using the banking software, helping, helping them to work for us. Using the sweep account, we are earning about $15,000 every 35 days. And that's money that we weren't getting before.
Good job.
We're hopeful that that will, I know it's very small, though. It's not going to solve any of our problems, but it's money we were getting before.
Every dollar goes in the bucket. Every little one counts on every line item.
You're right.
Adds up.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a request.
Okay.
That request is because the budget is such a sensitive topic, and I think when we were reviewing the budget, trying to drill down through the website and find out where the budget was and the audit, is it possible that this could be added to the front of the city's webpage so it's easily accessible and any member of the public can find out where we're at?
Yeah, definitely. And we also have that, that audit that we just got for, what? Last week? Just, just recently? That's, that's old, old, but we have it now, so that's good. And it can help us. We've had to send it out to different, our land lenders that we have, different banking partners that we have, things like that, that have been waiting for it. So it's nice to be able to supply that.
So Councilmember Strowman, presentations like this will eventually be added to the agendas page. There'll be a link where the agenda, agenda report is for these types of presentations, so it'll, it'll live there. We can certainly put it, you know, top of page of, of the city website as well.
Thank you.
So just to add a couple things. So this is our sort of first quarterly budget report. It is good to see it through your eyes. You know, obviously, Selinda primarily, me a little bit, have, have been looking at it. We look at it through a slightly different lens. This can absolutely be a living document. The information is for transparency. It's for you. It's for the community. So if there are things that you would like to see, want to see, please let us know. We can change more, adjust as, as needed. It really is our, our, our goal to be transparent here, and we want to give, you know, the council and the community a snap, a snapshot every quarter on, on what's happening.
Thank you for that. Just before we move on to the next item, was there any questions or concerns or comments from the audience here in the room on that item before we move to the next one? Seeing nobody coming up to the podium, we'll go ahead and move on to item nine, the Dent Elementary School Area Sidewalk Installation Project Presentation.
So thank you, Mayor. We'll do nine, and then we'll loop back up to number seven. We do have a presentation. Every time the council accepts a project after being complete, we'll do before and after pictures, kind of describe the project, kind of where it fits in, in the city infrastructure. So we can do nine first, and then we'll loop back and do seven.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know we have been talking about the Dent Sidewalk Area Project as of late, but we did want to bring it to your attention. Have a few slides to show you. Again, just a little description. The purpose of this project is to improve pedestrian safety to and from Dent Elementary School and to maintain city standards through the installation of sidewalks. So as you'll see on this first slide here, it's a little bit of a description on the, right in the middle is Lydia Street. Far south is California Street, between Mitchell, Brayton. So the green circles there, as you see on the right, the ADA curbing, those will be new ADA curvings that will be installed on those corners now. Some of the corners may have a little bit of an ADA, but they're either old standards, so we will be upgrading those. But most here will be a new ADA ramp, along with some crosswalks. You'll see the highlighted in between the new, those will be new painted crosswalks onto the ground, along with the new sidewalks. So the red lines there will be all sidewalks that will be added in the area. And the black is what you see is some of the driveway approaches that we will be encountering. And so what we're kind of do, we kind of walk the area and look. We're going to actually, instead of just cutting out these driveways for the sidewalk, we're going to go back to the nearest coal joint or go back to the nearest spot of the driveway to try. to try to make it look uniform for the homeowner and the resident as well. We don't want to just go in there and start chopping things up. And in fact, it'll clean up some of the driveway areas a little bit more. The idea of this project, of course, is just to have the safe travel for students back and forth to school. We're pretty excited about the project. Next slide here. Here is kind of a little indication of what will be going on. On the far left of your picture there, you'll see that blue line. That is actually the City of Escalon's right-of-way. Ninety-nine, or I should say 98% of the project is in our right-of-way. We will be encroaching in inches in other areas, so technically we will have a little bit of right-of-way there, but it's just inches, nothing to, to be too alarmed with. Again, you'll see where the sidewalk proposed. We're proposing the four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. Any landscaping, we've kind of gone through. We will be putting everything back exactly the way it is. There are some trees that will be in the way. We've spoken to, I believe, every homeowner at this time and have asked them if we can take the trees out, if we would like them to replant them somewhere else, if they would like a new tree planted somewhere on their property, or if they just don't want the tree back. So we've kind of coordinated some of these. As you can see, the top left here, we will have to take a few of those trees out. And then those homeowners will have one put back in their yard. The driveway there, one of the reasons for going back to the coal joint, the coal joint would be that first joint that you see on your page going east and west there. That's where we will be going back to, to repair that driveway rather than just the four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. On your left-hand corner here is a picture of some of the landscaping that we will be encountering. Again, we will be putting the sidewalk through here, talk to the homeowner. If they want this exact same thing, look back behind sidewalk, excuse me, we will put it back. If they want trees gone, they want more trees put in, we're kind of accommodating that as well. And on the far right there, again, we have a little citrus tree. That's a tree the lady would like to have in her backyard. So we're going to take that out, plant it into a big pot for, and let her put it in her backyard. So it's, we've, we've walked around, staff and I, have talked to quite a few people in the area. It's, it feels like it's gone over very well. We've tried to answer every question that's out there. We're really excited about it. So if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer those at this time.
I do. Justin, a picture that we're looking at, the top right-hand corner where we're going to bring it back to the coal joint. Do we have waivers or hold harmless for us at that transition? It looks like there's, you know, a couple-inch dip there. It's going to be hard to match that up without creating a tripping hazard.
You know, and that's a great question. And one of the reasons for us, it does make it easier to go back to that coal joint because that gives us more room to be able to get those slopes and to level those out. So in essence, that will make it easier for us to do that.
So we're going to, we're going to float to the imperfections in their, in their driveway essentially?
That is correct.
And then do we have some type of liability waiver, you know, in case of further settling in their driveway or it's, it's damaged and we create a tripping hazard and they come back and say, well, we tripped. It's, it's yours from that coal joint forward, and now I want you to pay for my broken leg.
Sure.
Do we, do we have anything in place for that?
I guess that's more of a Frank question, but I know before this job will be finalized, we will be doing job walks, punch lists, and those will be things personally that staff will be looking at, making sure everything will be ADA approved. So no matter what we do float to, if a wheelchair lets go, we still will be ADA compliant. But of course, trip hazards, things like that, we'll be very mindful for. And I can follow up with Frank and we'll get the details, and I'm sure we can get something along those lines worked out for sure.
A quick question. I know you said it generally went well. Do we have any, like, significant pushback or any?
You know, I can't, personally, I don't think we have any significant pushback. We are going to have a little bit of sidewalk and some more landscape, more landscape area. We have some. Up here on the north, you'll see Yosemite School in front of Dent. To the east there, we are going to be, we wanted to be putting sidewalk in at this time in that project, but if the council remembers, we've had a few water main issues on that line as of recently. So we actually got a project in line to replace that water main, so we're going to go ahead and do that sidewalk at that time as well just because it kind of makes more sense. So we'll do the sidewalk and the street at that time, which will be here in the near future, just not at the same time as this project.
Real quick, we did receive some pushback in the beginning before we were able to, you know, fully describe the project. And I just want to show you on the left, the level of detail that, you know, we went through and spoke to, to each resident. You know, it's not universally loved, right? You're still affecting people's yards, even though it's primarily our right-of-way. There's still some impact. We did see a lot more impact on Yosemite. So as we get into that project with a lot of water line and then the sidewalks in there, I'm sure there will be, you know, some conversations that will have to be had. This area that you're showing here, kind of our first phase, has been a little cleaner, a little less pushback. You saw some of the pictures. But once we were able to describe it to people, talk to them about what would be put back in, how it would be put back in, you know, the, the minimal impact that it would primarily have on their properties, there started to be a receptiveness, and that's kind of our goal. We want to share it over and over and over so people have time to kind of understand and think through it a little bit.
And I'll just add, in terms of the liability question, generally the way public projects work is the contractor remains on risk until the city basically accepts the project as complete, and then the city takes over any potential risk issues. There are some potential immunities under the law for cities for a trip and falls, those types of things that would apply normally anyways. But outside of some kind of separate, separate agreement, either with the contractor or the property owner, it's generally going to fall to the city. So we can look into that. I can look at that with Justin, we can explore that. But the default is, once we accept it, we, we have that potential exposure.
And, and not just, you know, that exposure for the trip and fall, but can we go back to the photo? So when, when and if they decide to have that upper portion of their driveway replaced, now they're going to have to match the imperfection that we matched by pouring to their driveway? So I could see somebody wanting to argue that and saying, well, now the whole thing needs to be repoured. It's going to be at your expense. I don't know legally if, if we can ask for, you know, like a hold harmless or some type of waiver, but if you could look into that.
Yeah.
I think it's advantageous for the city.
Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah, we'll do.
What kind of timeline are we looking at with, I even know it's 100 degrees outside next October, but what is your rough timeline you think for when we might start and how long it might take you?
Well, we are going to be going out to bid on the 16th of this month. And it's probably about 30 days after that, I would, I wish to say. It's going to be hard to get it started in the winter. We really had hopes. We want to kind of get started in November, but to be honest, I'm not quite sure if we're going to be able to make that. We kind of have to predict what happens, going to have with the future, when the bids come back, how they look, if the contractor is able to get going right away or not, if it's going to have to hold. So I'll get back to you on that. We want to get started as soon as possible. We also don't want to put our foot in our mouth and get started in a rainy season or too early as well.
Especially if we're going back to joint lines to remove a driveway halfway, and then we're out three weeks for rain and they're impacted as a resident. We don't want to do that, so. Okay.
So I have a multitude of questions. First one being, well, you kind of touched on the first one. Do we really have to go out to bid next month? Reason why I ask is, you know, further on, we're going to hear the, a report about accepting the project for the lift station. And included in there, there was a delay of four months by the city that ultimately cost that project $100,000 because the project was delayed for four months. Is there a benefit of bidding the project out right now or waiting on bidding it out in January with an anticipated start date in March? That way, we're at the tail end of the rainy season as opposed to bidding it now facing a four-month delay and then have to pay escalation? I'm just asking.
Sure, sure. And, and obviously too, I mean, I'm sure Jalen will step in here, but going out to bid, that doesn't commit us to a timeframe of starting right now. We still will get the construction timeline, so we can coordinate that at the time, but I understand where you're coming from. Why we have to go now, I don't think we have to. Like, we're ready to. The funding, we're ready to go with the project. We've been working on it, but I mean, you have good points, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it can save $100,000 by waiting to go out to bid for two months, it may behoove us to save that $100,000, especially as Councilmember Engel noted. You know, if you look at the picture in the upright corner, there is definitely something going on with that subgrade. And do we have situations like this accounted for? What if the subgrade is failing? Then we're spending more money to have to do extra repairs in there, so just something to consider. Next question is the picture to the left. Has there been any coordination whatsoever with PG&E?
Of course, yeah, definitely, with all utility companies.
Well, the reason why I ask is where that pole is sitting, that looks like it's almost directly in the path of travel for that crosswalk. And I'm concerned that if we're spending the money to put in crosswalks, I don't think we can have a utility pole right in the middle of the crosswalk, and so.
You're correct. The utility pole would not be in the middle of the crosswalk.
Okay.
One of the reasons why we're going to have to remove some of those trees there for the ADA ramp to be able to get around that pole and line the crosswalk up where it wouldn't be in line with the pole, for sure.
So if, if we have to relocate the utility poles, PG&E will come out and, or it's part of this project to move them out of the path of travel?
There is no relocation of any poles needed.
Okay.
Hey, before you go on, I just want to clarify something on your previous comment about holding off on going out to bid could potentially save money. I think we can go out to bid now with the understanding that we may not start some March, and then that there shouldn't be any escalation if there were, the, the contract and the bid is for the job start in March. So I, I don't think there's much relevance to the comment.
I'll just agree to disagree because I'm dealing with escalation every single day, and.
There's not escalation on a contract that doesn't come due for, you know, the allotted timeframe. I could see it if we were saying we wanted to start in October or November, and then we don't start until March. But if part of our contract is that construction isn't due to start until March, then there shouldn't be any changes in the price.
Okay. My next question is the picture in the bottom left. That neighbor actually had a conversation with me, and he does not want, this is further down on the eastern side of Yosemite, and he does not want this project to go through because it's eating up a lot of his sidewalk. So keep that in mind if, if and when that second phase goes through. He's very, very concerned because this picture shows a little bit of landscaping, but further down close to his driveway with his front yard basically becomes the sidewalk, so.
Definitely be a challenging one.
Yes. That's it.
I'll just address a couple of those comments. I think, and you know, it's a bit of a dance with construction. We don't know who's going to get the project. We don't know how quickly they can get to a project. You know, concrete is, is, you can't do it in the pouring rain necessarily, but you know, there's some things you can do in, in the rainy season as long as you're not opening up huge areas. So we do hedge our bets, right? There's, as soon as the contractor gets on board, they have their ways and means. You know, they can kind of fit the project in as, as they want. You know, the longer we delay, then they get into the construction season and they have a little more ability to raise prices. So right, we, we are trying to manage the entire situation. There were extenuating circumstances on that delay for the project that did, that did cost some money. It wasn't just, you know, we were, we were ready too early. So there's, you know, there's a, a bit of a dance, and, and we are trying to do more projects to use, utilize the money that we do have to improve the community. We recognize that people aren't always going to want improvement. People get used to what they have. We, we totally recognize that. You know, there is a reason cities have standards and, and things that need or should be done. And we have shown already, and we continue, we will continue to do, to work with the residents on, you know, what they want to see throughout the entire process. I certainly know it will not go perfectly well, but we are, are optimistic that it will go well. In coordinating with the utilities, absolutely. As Justin mentioned, that sidewalk will jog around. The, and that's why we're removing some of those trees. Then the crosswalk will be located in such a way that it, it matches with the sidewalk. So many challenges and, and, you know, great questions that we've received so far, and there will be many more as we get into this project or get closer to this project. And, you know, we will try everything we can to, to navigate all of those questions and, you know, minimize the city's risk and minimize the city's output as we get into the project.
There's rerouting of irrigation. Is that part of the, will the contractor move that? So if, if we have to move the irrigation lines back away from the sidewalk?
Yeah, definitely. Any, in any, or any interruption inside the yard, whether it be, even if it's electrical going to valves or something, everything will be put back 100% at the project's cost.
Are there any comments or concerns from the audience at this point on this item, this presentation? Any more at the council level? All right, we'll go on, move on to the next item, which is matters presented from the audience.
Well, real quick, if we can do numbers.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
So the before and afters, not the entire point of this presentation. But we do want to share, this is phase two. There's obviously a phase one. There's going to be a phase three. We want to share kind of where this fits, what the purpose is, why it is.
So what was, so the pictures are not of the whole project, so I'm not quite sure if everybody would like to see what's in the sewer pipe before and after the project. But I do want to show here on the map there. Down below, we did start with our phase one, which was an emergency repair, excuse me, back in 18 or 19. What, the project that is just completed here, the phase two sewer line, is that we installed 4,450 feet of 24-inch PVC, and that's that yellow line there that Mr. French was circling. Kind of comes out of our wastewater treatment plant, Cross River Road, to the west end of the gun, the.
Sportsman's Club?
Thank you. The Sportsman's Club there, go down Meyer, go down the back road. We kind of took it out of the orchard. We had some sewer line running through that orchard. We removed it from that orchard and kind of rewrote it down the road onto McHenry. And in the pictures, you will notice that some of the before, this was coming off of McHenry, turned on to Myers, the railroad track there and the roadway. The sewer line does come down that roadway and tie into McHenry there. This is kind of wrapping around the corner, going towards the back end. We do have a sewer line going down here as well, this roadway here. And again, this is kind of where it turns going into the orchard. The Sportsman's Club is just adjacent to the north of that picture there, and you'll see some of the tracks there. That's kind of what the escape looked like prior to the installation of the 24-inch line. And then once the project got completed, here's the roadway outside of McHenry. The railroad track is now abandoned, so it got removed. The county wanted a certain thickness there on the roadway, so the, they got a really nice roadway wrapping down there all the way around Myers and down into the orchard there. So the next picture's there, kind of before and after the exact same pictures. Project went fairly well. The roadway turned out really well. We did have to move, remove some of the trees on the orchard on the left-hand side. We coordinated with the, the orchard owner there to do so and kind of got the project done. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer. We're glad the project's done, and we'll kind of plan for phase three coming up here soon after that.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments on this?
What are you forecasting to start phase three?
We've kind of, I'd rather Jalen answer that. We kind of debated back and forth. We have some reasonings to kind of go back and forth. Personally, I'm ready to go now.
I'll pass it on to Frank. No idea. So there's a fiscal component to phase three, of course. We really want to figure out exactly where we are financially in this enterprise fund. We also have another expenditure in this enterprise fund with the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. So we, you know, we're sort of letting both projects kind of settle out a little bit. We want to understand what the impact to the hopefully less than $40 million wastewater treatment plant upgrade project is. wastewater treatment plant upgrade project is before we get headlong into any sizable project. So we don't, long way of saying, we don't have an answer yet. We are continuing to kind of evaluate and navigate that and we'll come before you as soon as we've figured it out.
Phase three is in the middle of McHenry, correct?
It's in McHenry, pretty much in the middle, yeah.
There's really some obstacles on both the east and the west sides that preclude us from being able to go not in the middle of the road. Part of also what we're looking at is, you know, how to minimize the impact through the roadway, what season to go during, you know, in, that type of thing to, again, minimize the impact.
Not during harvest season, please.
How critical is phase three? Are there current failures?
Yes, there is current failures in the line.
Got any question there?
I was just gonna say, good job.
How far on either side of McHenry do we control the right-of-way?
You mean, what's our boundary, like off the roadway itself?
Yeah.
We'd have to look, but on average, we're five-feet-ish.
I'm wondering if rather than impact McHenry, could the project go along one of the sides?
Well, as Mr. French was saying, just because that's where we're at, we, the railroad has their right-of-way. We have poles adjacent there. We can't put it on the other side of the roadway because then we're gonna have to start approaching into the lawns and into the homes that are there now. We've gone every which way we could. And really, the only way we can put this line is, is gonna be in the asphalt in the roadway.
Railroad on one side, joint trench on the other. It's gotta go up the pipe here, up the middle.
Gotta keep the current pipe working until we get the new one in place and then transfer it over. Yep.
So one quick question, though. In your opinion, you think we're good to go to pause this short-term?
I mean, yes, with the staff we have down at Public Works, we're maintaining the line. We're keeping an eye on it. It's, you know, knock on wood, we're not gonna lose it tomorrow. But it's in dire need. It needs to get taken care of. But we can continue to keep maintaining it.
Okay, thanks.
How long has that pipe been in the ground?
Oh, good question.
A while? That's a bad answer, but.
We think 50s, 40s. It's hard to say.
Back to the 50s, huh?
With what pipe is in there, if that's.
Careful of the questions you ask. Okay, any other questions? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. And except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of an item is within the subject matter of the city as a discretionary decision made by the mayor. At that point, we open up to the folks in the room here. If you had something you wanted to bring up to the podium, you're more than welcome to.
You know who I am. First of all, Celinda, thank you. What a refreshing report from finances. You are a breath of fresh air for this city. I appreciate it. And future congratulations to this side of the room. I have a question regarding recreation. So I missed Wednesday's meeting, I'm sorry. I had better things to do for that night, sorry. Recreation's important. I don't see it on the agenda, though. Is that something that's gonna be on the next agenda possibly about the rec and the possible baseball, softball? I know that we're really pushing it on time to get it done. And, you know, we've got some young men that really need baseball this year. And if we don't get it done, they're not gonna get it, so.
Yeah, we think it'll be on the agenda for 10/21.
10/21, okay. Does that give us enough time if we go private to get it done? Because, I mean, that's like November, that's pushing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It gives us as much time as possible.
Okay, but it will be on the agenda. All right, thank you.
Can I just say something? If, and I know that it's planned to be on the next agenda, whether it's passed or not passed, we would continue our Babe Ruth program. It wouldn't be, there is no program. It would be the continuation of the program that we've had in place. So we wouldn't be losing baseball, losing baseball, softball. So I just wanted to make, I just wanted to clarify that for you. Like, it's not going away or going anywhere. Okay. Understood.
Anybody else in the room? All right, is anybody online that has anything to say? I don't know if we have anybody online tonight. I should ask that question before we move on. No questions? All right, then we're gonna go ahead and close matters presented from the audience and move on to administrative matters. Item 10, accept the annual audit report for fiscal year '22, '23. Is that you, Celinda?
Yes, thank you. That is me. And I'm worked with the current provider we have now on it and it just took an incredibly long time. So, and I've only been here, what, five months, six months? And it seems to be what we were doing the whole time. Yeah, I'm very happy that it's done and I'm confident that it's a, it's a good report.
Thank you for pressing hard on it. I know it wasn't an easy task.
Any questions at the council level for Celinda on this item? Any comments, concerns, or questions from the audience?
No, I, yeah, I, sorry.
That's okay.
Once it comes back.
All right, it's back to us. If we want to move to approve or take a motion.
I do, just a general question, because I did look through it. There didn't seem to be any major discrepancies. It did take an awfully long time to come back to us. Did you see anything in particular that may have caused the delay that I may have missed when I was going through it?
The only thing I can think of, it was changing horses midstream. You know, we kind of had a lot of different hands involved with us and I think that may have been what led them to believe we weren't serious about getting it done. I really don't know. The question is, why did it take so long? I don't have an answer for that. Because the portion that I produced was the first, like, 18 pages of it. I'm like, well, what are we paying you for? Yeah, it is a process and it usually does not take that long. So we're confident that we can find either a better solution in the future or a different company or something.
Okay, thank you. And then, is that out for bid for the next?
I was just gonna mention. So this is the audit report for '22, '23. We have released a request for proposals to get a new auditor, or any auditor, an auditor onboard to help us with the '23, '24 audit and be more on time with these. It's an important, it's an important document for our city, so we wanna, we wanna be on top of that. So we do, we have released that. It's due soon. Hopefully, we get a lot of interest in that and can select a good auditor for the city.
Have we had any response as of yet?
Yes.
Yes, I've had a lot of questions and different things. That's one of my next things for tomorrow, to get all those knocked out and answered. But one of the main questions is, where is your financial report for '22, '23? It's like, well, okay, once we get it approved, I will give it to you.
And when are those responses due?
You know, I'm not really quite sure exactly when they're due, but it's usually as soon as possible type of thing. It's somebody that's gone out and said, okay, yeah, we'll bid on this, but I need to see your report for last year first. So I see their point, it's just, we just didn't have it to show.
That's the reason why we're asking for your services. It's because it's taking so long. I understand, yes. Okay, thank you so much.
And I can't recall the date, council member, I'm sorry. But it's in the next, like, week or so.
So if we had to forecast, when we could anticipate the next audit, obviously, it won't be a year and a half later, but when do you think?
No, but honestly, I should have already had that prepared and out to the auditor as of 10/1. That would have been the timeframe that you would normally work under. I've kind of had to really change these timeframes around quite a bit. But I, if I can find somebody to send this to, we can get it turned around fairly quickly. I would say within 30 to 60 days. It really depends on what the auditor is requiring of us. And I can produce pretty much anything, but I just have to get that list and say, you know, what do you, what do you need? I'm not too keen on going back to the person that we have now. I'm aware, well aware of what they would require, but I'm more than happy to work with a new person in order to get things done faster.
Yeah, we won't know until we get someone on. But our goal is, we're not in the busy season. We have all the information, all the data, it's already done, right? Because that year has passed. We want to get someone on as quickly as possible and work through it as quickly as possible. You know, one of the things through the RFP and the selection process will be who's got capacity right now, who can do it quickly. But they do have a process. They're an auditor. They gotta get in and look at our files and some of them are deep and buried and, you know, challenging. So they have their process as well. We want it to be a sound process, so we want them to dig. But we want to march forward as quickly as we can.
Unless someone has something else to say, I'd like to make a motion, if we can. I'd like to make a motion to accept the annual audit report for fiscal year '22 to '23.
I'll second that. So we have a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next up on our administrative matters, item 11, consider employment agreement between the city and Jalen French for the position of city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 11 is the employment agreement between the city and Jalen French to be appointed and serve as the city's permanent city manager. As you know, since April of this year, Jalen has stepped up and served the city as the interim city manager upon the resignation of his predecessor. In that time, he has more than stayed the ship of the city. He has served well, while also essentially still wearing two hats as the development and community services manager as well. And so what we have before you is a recommendation to approve the employment agreement to make Jalen the permanent city manager. His current interim city contract would have expired on November 15th, so this is consistent with that time period. This is a very similar form agreement to the prior contracts the city has had with city managers. It's just been updated to conform to best practices, some best practices and conformed to consistent, current law. It provides the same severance benefit of six months, which is pretty standard. In fact, some cities have a lot more, but that's been the city's practice, so we stuck with that. It's, the salary is essentially what Mr. French has already been making. It's consistent with step one or step A of the city's adopted salary schedule for city manager. It does allow for some potential merit increases upon a satisfactory performance review based on future evaluations. And other than that, I would say it's pretty straightforward. So happy to answer any questions that you may have about it. It is a five-year contract term. And again, that was consistent, I think, with the prior city manager's term. And, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that, City Attorney. Just quickly, it was a unanimous decision by this council for the support from Mr. French for this position. I want everybody to know that he has our full and complete support. For myself, I want to say you've done a great job picking it up and running with the ball, trying to cover both positions. I don't believe you've dropped a step anywhere in that process. And I'm happy that we are able to move forward with this contract for you.
This side of the table says thank you as well. We appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure working with him, you guys. Excellent choice.
Thanks for the input. Appreciate that very much.
Just to be clear, they haven't voted yet, guys.
It's kind of like that movie thing. If they say no, we may go with. Just putting that out there.
Hedging.
I'd like to reiterate that. I think you've been a breath of fresh air. You really know what you're doing and I appreciate that. You're bringing a lot to the table that is gonna make Escalon, well, really, whether Escalon realizes it or not, we've got a real valuable asset in him. So thank you for deciding to, you know, join us.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something? So Jalen, I know you haven't been here long, but similar to what Mayor Bellinger and Mayor Protem Hagan said, I think your communication is with the council and amongst all the city departments is impeccable. I appreciate you reaching out. I appreciate you keeping us informed. My only regret is that you came here a little bit too late. I wish you would have been here about, I don't know, 10 years ago. But I feel like you're such an incredible asset to the city and for the constituents. I give you all the support in the world and appreciate everything that you do for the city of Escalon.
And at risk of embarrassing you, Mr. French, I know how much you love it when we say your praises in public, but I do want to just let everybody, the public, know, staff know how much, how much you're appreciated. The first year and the second year of being here, the communication level from staff to council has been amazing and how improved we've gotten of communication. And I know the public doesn't exactly see this part of it, but we're let in on what's going in, on, in the city, important things, when they happen, on the hour. If there's something that we need to know, we know it. And so that has made our job easier, but then also very fulfilling. And it makes us feel like we can do our job a lot better up here. So it is appreciated and thank you for keeping the, keeping the team going forward. So I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the community or anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment agreement between the city and Jalen French for the position of city manager.
I'd like to second that.
I think we'd all like to second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, next up, council communications. First up, Councilman Strohman, what do you got tonight?
Just, I really want to say thank you to, to the four of you for considering the breast cancer awareness proclamation. It's something that's very near and dear to my heart. My mother-in-law is a two-time survivor. My godmother and aunt passed away at age 44 from breast cancer. My other aunt is a survivor. I have many friends and family that have been affected by that disease. And so just want to reiterate my thanks to all of you and to the community in supporting that proclamation. It's very, very important to me, both personally and as a council member. The only other thing that I want to reiterate is there's been some discussion regarding my vote regarding the American Red Cross on the August 15th meeting. And I voted against sunsetting that agreement. And I would like to state on the record that the only reason that I voted against sunsetting that agreement was because I feel that a disaster shelter is needed for this community. And I do not support opening up a shelter for a quote-unquote "government disaster", whether that's for immigration, whether that's for homelessness, whatever. So the reason that I voted against sunsetting it is because I felt like there was a true need for a disaster shelter within the city of Escalon. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Walker?
Sure. So mostly just praise for our staff today. Thank you to the group of people that we now have making up our team here. Celinda, increasing efficiency with the measures in our budget is much appreciated and we're easily able to see that in that, in this first review. And then, I didn't have this, but the audit as well, making sure that comes to fruition. The ability for us to see. The ability for us to see everything so transparent is new to the city, or new to me. It's a lot easier for us to see what's going on, and it's, your hard work is seen and appreciated, and thank you for that. And then, also, Justin, thank you, and Justin, and city manager, with the quick movement on the sidewalk project. When I proposed that last year, you know, it was a little bit rough getting the movement going forward, but for the safety of our children and, and being able to have our residents come, all that traffic, and move forward with the safety measures, I really do appreciate that with everybody moving forward so fast, once we did get moving on that, once we did get budget passed. So much appreciated, as well as the sewer line. I know the joke was made that, do you really wanna see what's in here? But once we did get, council has been able to see the wastewater treatment plant, we did take a tour of that, and once we can see, I can see what city workers have to deal with, just tangibly have to deal with. It does very much affect what you put down your sewer. It really does, and I encourage anybody who has never seen that process to see that, and you will care a lot more about what you have, for your city water workers are touching everything that comes through your sewer line. So hopefully, all those lines can get put in place, so you don't have to, you know, you don't have to deal with...
Keep the medical insurance going for us.
Yeah, yeah, right? So we'll do that. Thank you so much for your guys' quick movement on all of that. And then the last one, you know, this is moron society, and this week especially, there's a lot of government cynicism, and, and what we're doing, how we're handling things up here, mostly on a bigger federal level, and just, I just want to encourage people to get out to vote, your vote does matter. It matters mostly, I mean, it most, it matters very much on the city level, the smaller level, as a person who ran last time and got by by a little tiny margin of eleven votes, eleven people made the difference. You do make a difference when you get out and vote. Make sure you're reading what you're voting for, the things in our city, that your neighbors are the ones, your city is the one that really does make a difference in your day-to-day life, but also vote for all of those. Make sure you read them carefully, know what you're doing, but get out, and your vote does count. Please make sure you go out there and do that. So with that, that ends my spiel for today.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Engel, what do we have tonight?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Jalen, congratulations by Davy Board. In, in light of the election, it's been brought to everybody's attention that the, the chamber is not gonna be holding the candidates forum this year. I do, I do realize it's probably not in the city's best interest to be the host of that function, but I do believe it's in the interest of the city for the city to get involved and find somebody to facilitate that event. We are running short on time with mail-in ballots starting, and the election days away. I wish I had a great suggestion as to what organization could potentially do it. I don't. I think most of the nonprofits in town would not be able to step in. The only people that I've thought of at this point, potentially reaching out to, is maybe Marge at the newspaper, and seeing if there's anybody there at the newspaper that would be interested in facilitating that. And if we can find somebody to facilitate that, I would, I would like to bring it to the council, that we would be able to volunteer that, or donate that, that time at the community center for that to be able to happen.
Do we have to wait till next meeting?
No, well, I'm gonna have to get on to the agenda, yeah?
Is there any way that we could, not to interrupt, but for, for his idea, if everyone was okay with it, to, that it doesn't have to come to the next agenda?
Waive the fee.
So I'm, I hate to be sycrile, but unfortunately, we can't make any action, even if it's a relatively routine or simple action, and it's something that there was consensus on just because it hasn't been agendized. And I need to say that because if we start going down that path, we create the precedent for other things. So it's important that we stick to, and frankly, it's a requirement of the Brown Act. It doesn't distinguish between minor versus major actions or decisions. So I would, I would advise, if it has to be discussed and decided on by the council, it has to be on a future agenda discussion if, but, you know, Jalen also has the ability as the administrative head of the city, running day-to-day operations, to try to look in, look into what you've, you know, recommended.
Can, can I ask that staff would seek somebody to facilitate that, and if, if that were to become an option, I mean, we could hold a special meeting for that, right?
Absolutely.
Forty-eight hours notice, or is it, is it...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours notice?
Yes.
So if that's something that we could work on, time is of the essence.
I'd like to add some other ideas. We may want to reach out to some other entities. I know that the churches usually have some, first of all, they have a will to want to see our candidates and what they have to do, and, and they have some space that may be able to utilize to do this. We have several churches in the area, so that would be one to reach out to, and the other would be the school district. They do have that very nice theater that doesn't, we wouldn't need to rent chairs or any of the speaker systems. They have the stage and the seating. So if we could possibly reach out to the superintendent, see if that would be something that they would be willing to donate for us as well. So those are some ideas. On this one.
I have a question for you, city attorney. If that was the route they go, that would not have to be routed through city business at all if we, so if it was presented to a local church and, say, they opened it up, or the, a local nonprofit came up with the idea and said, hey, we can do this, they talked to the, say, the school district, and they go, we're willing to give you the auditorium for this night, whatever. They can do all that outside of a council decision.
I was about to say, the way I look at what I'm hearing from Councilman Engel and, and by not shaking their heads by the others, is, Jalen, do your job, see if you can find this out, if it needs to, if a, if a decision needs to come to council for council direction or action, he will agendize that and get that before you. If there's other avenues closed, and the only option is at, at a city facility, obviously that would come before the council, that kind of thing, but I think the sense is, let me, let's prefer this to staff to look into, if, if Jalen needs to bring it back to the council, he will, but it may not require.
Okay. Thank you for the direction, appreciate that.
Yep.
Keeps us out of trouble, please.
And I'll just say, I'll just say, just, this is probably more for the public than just the council, but whenever the city's involved in anything related to elections, the city has to take a very even-handed approach. It can put other people in touch to, to, to minister and run it, that's all fine. We just can't have our thumb on the scale, or be accused of having our thumb on the scale in terms of any particular candidate or issue. It has to be very even-handed and neutral, so...
And I think that's what we're looking for.
Absolutely.
Looking for some help to find somebody to facilitate it, not, we don't wanna miss an opportunity.
Absolutely.
That's all tonight. Thank you. Mayor Protem Hagan, what you got tonight?
I just wanted to give a thank you to Officer Vier for his hard work. It sounds like he's doing a good job for you. And to Steve Santos, you know, I've known Steve for a long time, and it's nice to see him. He's a real nice guy, and nice to see him get a little bit of recognition. And, you know, amazing job, a lot of people would sink from that kind of situation, so glad to hear that. You know, obviously, Celinda, Chief, Justin, Frank, you're in there, too. You know, thank you for your hard work, and we can see you guys are working as a team now, and that's, that's awesome to see. Obviously, your, Jalen is, sorry, the city manager, Jalen, is, you know, helping to facilitate that, and, and, you know, we appreciate it up here more than you think, so thank you. Other than that, you know, I don't have anything else really to add to tonight. I only just had one question for Justin on the L-screen. One of the, do you know, do we put the L-screen away, or did it get stolen?
No, we have the screen.
We have it? Okay. Someone was asking about it, so...
Not my guys, right?
No, Sid. Sid was asking, you know, Sid?
Yeah.
He was asking for it.
Yes, we have it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that, appreciate that. I'll make it brief, I'll echo the thanks to the staff. You guys are doing a great job, keep it up. I'll try and brief and keep it at that level for you. Question for the council level here, I was asked by the local high school here, Escalon Cougars, to participate in the homecoming parade. It was extended to me, and I asked if we could extend that to the whole council, and they said we could. I would love for you to join me for the homecoming parade, for those that can. According to the rules, I guess we're not allowed to throw candy at their parade, which is no fun for us, that's the fun part for us, but...
We should T-shirts.
What's the date?
It's the eighteenth. So about a week and a half away, on Friday, the eighteenth. I believe, school's out at two-thirty, parade's at three, I believe, so we have to muster around two-thirty, if you can make it.
What vehicle are we, well, I guess the question is, do we have the old vehicle to go in the back, or with the old truck before, or if not, otherwise, we're just throwing in our truck, in my truck, I guess, one or the other.
I can ask.
Well, between the two of us, we'll come up with a vehicle.
No offense, Mr. Mayor, but I prefer the older vehicle.
I would, too. I agree, I've seen that truck, and it's a lot, it's a lot more fun for parades. It's the eighteenth of October. Yeah, for the homecoming parade, so if we're interested in doing that, I would love everybody to join in and be a collective group.
Okay.
For all of us that can make it. Good for the, for the kids. Good, awesome.
I'll be there, too.
Awesome. Anybody else that can make it, that's great, if you guys can, that'd be great. And then check with the truck if you can, that would be great.
No candy?
Yeah, I'll check on it.
I'm gonna revisit that with the director of the parade and see what we can do there. See what's allowed and what's not allowed. Tradition for us to throw candy and whatnot.
Do we know what the theme is?
I have not been given a theme.
Okay.
So it's all gonna be our theme for our float, whatever we like. One vehicle, truck of some sort. With that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yay.
If we are gonna change vehicles, they ask for vehicle ID and issue, so I might have to smooth that up at the last minute.